Hello and welcome to the show. I'm Robyn Denning. Today, we welcome Jeff Justison to talk about his platform running for Wasco County Commissioner. Jeff, welcome to the show.
Well, thank you, Robyn. Thanks for having me today.
Great. So yeah, let's just dive in. Tell us about yourself and your background.
Sure. Well, I grew up out in Sherman County in a little town called Grass Valley, lived there through high school, went off to college, spent five years on a four-year plan. And after college, I graduated with a from Willamette University with a bachelor's degree in psychology. And once graduation happened, I realized I didn't know what I wanted to do when I grew up. So I moved back to Sherman County for a little while, worked on some friends farm, worked on some for a couple of businesses that support farming out there. And then, in the spring of 1990, I was hired by the Wasco County Juvenile Department to be a juvenile detention diversion counselor, which basically meant I spent part of my time working in the detention facility, which was pre-NORCOR, and also then carrying a small caseload of kids doing some minor things, MIPs, possession of tobacco, that sort of thing. And I spent about a year, year and a half doing that, and then was, I guess promoted, you'd call it, to a juvenile court counselor, which is kind of the equivalent of a juvenile probation officer. And I worked for Wasco County doing that for 13 years. And in 2003, I was hired to be the juvenile detention manager at NORCOR. I spent 19 years at NORCOR doing that. So as the juvenile detention manager, as the administrator of the juvenile facility, really kind of overseeing policy and personnel and budget and that sort of thing. And I was eligible to retire from the PERS system. The time was kind of right. I needed kind of a change. So I just decided to retire and see where life took me after that. So the last couple of years since retirement, been doing retired guy things, but also got my restricted sub-license and had been substitute teaching at the high school, just a little bit off and on, just for some extra time and some extra connection with kids and people up there.
Nice. You must have seen the Wasco County Commissioners in the jail board meeting, or NORCOR board meetings, working on stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. So all the time, I was there, once a month at the board meetings. There was a county commissioner, actually, from each of the four counties representing NORCOR. And I was spent time at all those board meetings. So 19 years, 12 board meetings a year, maybe a cancellation here and there. So well over a couple hundred meetings, seeing and interacting with those guys, yeah.
Yeah. And some of those, I mean, sometimes, obviously, it's been, they make good decisions. Sometimes it must have been frustrating on the other side of it, when the decisions aren't necessarily always exactly what you would hoped.
Sure. Yeah, there was times, a lot of times, I had to revolve around budget, because that's one of the boards, you know, kind of their main focus was to approve budgets. And the NORCOR budget kind of fluctuated with how the county budgets were doing. And so sometimes, we would be, we would need some increases, but the counties were reluctant to give it. And, and I can understand why, but at the same time, I needed to advocate for what we needed.
Yeah, yeah, cool. Thanks for asking me and answering my sidebar. That's great. So I know you've been a coach for many years. And can you tell me more about that coaching? And what, how those skills might equip you for Wasco County Commissioner?
Sure. Yeah, I've spent a ton of my adult life working around youth sports, really. I coached, starting in Little League, actually even before I had my own kids. I coached a group of softball players, girls softball players, back in the mid 90s, before I even was married and had kids. And then, my own kids through Little League, and Babe Ruth, and Legion, and then even when for baseball, and when baseball was, when I, when my own kids were done playing baseball, moved on to coach for several more years after that, just because I enjoyed it. I've also been an OSAA basketball and volleyball referee for over 30 years in each sport. So involved that way as well. You know, during my time at, in Little League, I was also on the Little League Board. So, and served as board president for several years. So, you know, just looking at the way things are run, making changes. An example of one of the things we changed while I was there is, I think, I'll use T-ball for an example. We would have T-ball teams, and we'd have maybe eight sponsors. And so if there was, however many kids that were in T-ball would get split up among those teams, well, sometimes there'd be 10, or 15 to 16, 17 kids. And I just realized that's too much standing around for a lot of five and six-year-olds. So we expanded the number of teams to lower the number of kids per team. And if we didn't have a sponsor for it, we just absorbed it within the, within the league. So had some board experience doing that. And then, really, I just think it's just some overall skills of leading, of organizing, of managing the kids and parents, dealing with all those things, officiating. You know, I understand that when, as officials, we will learn the rules, we'll practice, we'll prepare. But during a game, we have to apply the rules and make decisions in the heat of the moment. And sometimes, those aren't always popular decisions. Often refereeing, half the people are mad at any given time, or don't agree with your call. That might be overstating it a little bit, because I think even sometimes when calls go against somebody, they understand why. But, you know, I see some of that in being a county commissioner as well. You have to sometimes make decisions that not everybody's going to agree with. There's very few decisions that you can make that are going to be 100% agreed upon by everyone. So it's, it's just making sure you take your time to do your research and, and listen to what people have to say, and then, and then make the best decision you can in the moment.
Yeah, there's a, it's a big deep hole of refereeing and decision-making. We could go down of good calls and bad calls and indifferent calls, for sure.
For sure. And I've told people that it's interesting, because some people want to immediately voice their opinion on when somebody, when a referee misses a call, or an umpire in a baseball game, doesn't matter. And I think those people that are experienced doing it, they know probably before everybody else if they've missed a call. Because, believe it or not, referees are human, and they make mistakes. And, yeah, for sure. It's, it's a, it's an interesting, it's an interesting dynamic. And you just have to understand that people often go into those games with emotions. And as the official, you have to take your emotions out of it, and, and just do the best you can, under the circumstances and with what's going on in front of you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. I'm just kidding, everybody, by the way, obviously, you know, it's, the refereeing is a, is a difficult job. Tell us about why you're running for Wasco County Commissioner, and what are the issues that you're, that are most important to you?
Sure. I, you know, when I retired, some people put it in my, kind of just in the back of my mind, to look at doing this a couple of years down the road, if and when a seat became available. And after a couple of years of being retired, I just kind of looked and thought, you know, the time's kind of right for me to get back to be a little more involved. I miss being involved. You know, it's, I've, I've always been doing something. I don't necessarily need or want attention, but I just, I like to be involved. If I go to games, because I've coached and refereed so long, I'm not always the best spectator. I always feel like I should be doing something. I should be keeping score. I should be refereeing. I should be being a lines person in a volleyball game. I should be getting the referees water, if they need water. I mean, I, I just, I like to be involved. And so I kind of looked and talked with my wife, and the time was right for me to go ahead and, and file to run this, this year. You know, I really, there's a few things that are really important to me. Obviously, with my history of working with youth, I think issues that impact youth are going to be at the forefront of my mind if I'm elected. And the reality is, you can say almost all the issues that a county commissioner would face affect youth, right? But some more directly than others, but often indirectly. You know, mental health and addictions are near and dear to me. Working with some of the youth I worked with in the past, and some personal issues, some personal experience with those things. I, I just, I see a need. I think there's some great things going on locally. The Resolution Center, the Columbia Center for Living's got some great people doing some great work, as well as other agencies. I don't mean to discount anyone else. But just to be able to support those and expand those services the best we can, those kinds of things are really important to me. I really, I've said from the beginning, I want Wasco County to be a place where youth, if they choose, if they, if they want to move on and go somewhere else and see something else, that's great. I always encourage youth to see something else. If they want to be here all their life, that's great. Go try something else, and make sure this is where you want to be. But I want it to be someplace that they can come back, if they want to be a teacher, if they want to be a doctor, if they want to, if they want to work in the service industries, if they want to work in the trades, have it be a place that's thriving for them to work in, and live, and raise their families. And, you know, kind of keep that balance between the positive traditional values of the, of the area, and looking toward growth. So, again, youth big to me. The other thing that's kind of big, and one of the areas that I really hope that if I were elected, I could, that I could work hard to do is represent the small counties, or excuse me, small communities in, in the south part of the county, mid and south part of the county. Because I grew up in a small town. Grass Valley has 150 people. Sherman County has, you know, 1,800 people total. And so those are friends, they're family, they're people I know. I've spent over 30 years being in each of those communities, several times a year refereeing, coaching, whatever it may be. And so I know those people. And I, and I know, you know, I know a lot about, I obviously don't know everyone, but know a lot about what they value, and what they like, and what they want to see, and what they expect out of Wasco County. You know, and there's, there's very small towns, you know, Shanico and Antelope, that sometimes get overlooked a little bit. There's unincorporated areas, you know, Pine Hollow, Womack, and Ty Valley don't have their own post offices. They're not really incorporated cities. So they're, but there's a large population of people out there. And again, while everybody's needs not the same, there's, there's a lot of similar needs out there. So really would like to be a voice for, for those people out there. And, and figure out a way to make sure that they're represented fairly and equitably.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, that brings me to my next question, really, which is that, like, through your NORCOR experience, you've seen how facilities and institutions impact youth, you know, in that case, in a very specific manner. Obviously, facilities and institutions impact all of our, almost all of our youth, you know, in our, in our county. And how, how do you think, tell me about the link between how we invest in those facilities, like schools, like sports facilities, like the Resolution Center, and the outcomes that our youth kind of live with on a daily basis? Are those two things connected in your mind? And how are they connected?
Sure. Yeah, there's, there's lots of similarities. I think, first of all, I would say that regardless of the issues that brought, that brought the kids to NORCOR, or the Resolution Center, which will kind of be more for adults than juveniles, but young people in general, regardless of the, of the issues that brought them there, they're, they're still kids, right? I mean, first and foremost, they're still kids. And while I believe there needs to be some accountability, there also needs to be some work toward helping them make better choices, and move on to be productive members of society. I mean, I've, I've worked with some kids in the past, that, at the time, while I was always optimistic, sometimes it was tough to see the optimism. And they're doing great now. They're raising families, they're working hard, they're buying homes, you know. So ultimately, the kids in the system are, are still kids. But yeah, it's, it's really having a place that they can be, that they can be proud of. That goes along with the school. So similar with NORCOR, similar with the school. When the facility itself is in really good shape, it's bright, the walls are painted, it's clean, it's open, it's inviting, it's friendly, you see the dynamic of the kids change. And, you know, I think, we need, I don't think a lot of people would disagree with me, that we need a new high school in, in the DOWS. And I know, you know, I know Dooferr has done a lot to expand and improve their school. I know South Wasco's been doing a lot out in Mopin to improve their schools, too. But I just think that having that place the kids can be proud of, that the kids can be respectful of, that the staff that are there feel better about going to. When all of those things are combined, I think the, I think there's a definite correlation between how, how the youth feel and how they thrive.
Yeah. I mean, there's a big difference between feeling and existing and thriving.
Right. Sure. Yeah, yeah. It's, as things get, the more things get rundown, you feel that way. And, and darker and dingier, I mean, that's a pretty simple way to put it. But it's, you know, it, it, it doesn't help improve your, your emotions and your feelings. So whatever we can do to, again, improve the areas that those kids are in, to, to help them feel better about themselves, the more we're doing for them.
Yeah. Do you think, if, as a county, do you think there's an opportunity for the county to invest in more facilities for youth? And do you think the outcomes, and, and what are those outcomes that you see when we do invest, excuse me?
Yeah, I mean, I think studies will show that the more kids are invested in their community, the more positive outcomes there are, right? So kids that are involved in positive activities, you know, there's so many interests that kids have in its, and that people in general have. And so it's, it's difficult to make sure that we have, difficult but not impossible, to make sure that we have the opportunities for the kids, the different opportunities for kids. Like, I spent a lot of time working in Little League, and that's great. You know, there's 300 kids from, at the time, I don't know how many there are now, but 300 kids from five to 12 years old that are involved in that program. And that's great. But there's also other kids out there. So what are, what are the interests that we can not necessarily get those other five to 12-year-olds, maybe Little League's not for them. So what are the other opportunities for them? And so to have fields, you know, have recreational fields, you know, there's been a couple of good runs at having a youth center in, in town. You know, a little arcade just opened out, out on the east side. You know, just trying to find activities for kids that make them feel good, and give them some productive activities to do is, is great.
Yeah, sure. So tell me, at the, there's the, at the Wasco County Commissioner level, there've been some conversations and work towards replacing the hospital. And I know that the hospital has committed $100 million to that renovation effort as well. And I know that the conversation at the Wasco County level has included speculation and conversation regarding using Kramer Field as the primary location of the hospital. Tell me about how that lands with you, and those conversations have been manifesting in your world.
Sure. Yeah, I think that one of the things that I've been hearing, and this is something I'm trying to learn a little bit more about, but one of the things that I've been hearing is the, and I'm sure this has been looked into, and I haven't talked to everybody about it yet, but that citing a hospital down there, that there are some concerns around it, around the proximity to, like, the railroad tracks, for example. Because that's one of the, I was worried about that with NORCOR, right? That's one of the possibilities for significant disasters in the area. And yes, it cuts through town, so there's lots of other places it would affect. But I need to learn a little bit more about that. So it would be, while I'm in support of building a youth, an athletic complex somewhere, that will improve the experience for our youth, also give the chance for Wasco County to maybe bring people in for soccer, or softball, or baseball tournaments, whatever the case may be. So having a great big athletic complex would be great. Kramer would be a great place to have it because of its central location, right? It's easier, it's easy for the, easier for the, everybody to get there, that sort of thing. But at the same time, if that becomes the, if the final decision is, that's where the hospital is going to be, then, you know, I know there's some talk about the property on the west side, perhaps being fields. I know that there was a little bit for a while, some talk about the old rodeo grounds, which I think is now being taken up with the latest Google project. But I think, I think regardless, we need to, we just need to commit and, and do the best we can, because obviously, we're a little bit limited in where some of these things can be built. And so, but I'd really like to see us make a decision and move forward with those, versus continue to talk about them.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, in my world, my, my, you know, my opinion, growing up in, you know, in the UK, where we have much less land, you know, we live on a small Atlantic island. Hospitals, certainly in cities, you know, they have to do the build-on-top-of-themselves model for, you know, for expansion and growth, you know, where they move everyone to the left-hand side, build on the right-hand side, then move everybody to the right-hand side, then build on the left-hand side. And it's very normal for, for developments to go through phases of development like that. It's very, it's very, from the world over, it's a very established method of building when you have a limited space. And it seems, it seems, it seems far out, that in a space, in a city like this, with such limited green space, been limited by the National Scenic Area boundary, that we wouldn't use the existing site that the hospital is on, and use modern building techniques, and instead just decide to build on the green space over there. And that's obviously my opinion. So thanks for listening to that. But yeah.
Sure. And, and I will say that, one of the things, again, I'm trying to educate myself in a lot of areas that a commissioner would have to have knowledge in. But looking through the Wasco County Economic Development Commission Strategic Plan, the, I think, 22 through 27 Strategic Plan, even with housing, for example, and not just housing, but businesses and so forth, talking about, because of the limited area with the, with the urban growth boundary, the potential for vertical building, right? I mean, there's, there's potential in, do we want to become a city of high rises? Not necessarily, no. But there is, you know, some intrigue in looking at, at those things. And, and perhaps the hospital, you know, on the, on the site it's at, has some possibilities to do that. But again, not an expert. I know a lot of people have been looking into that, and they don't want to discount what they've been doing, and the efforts that have been going on.
Sure.
But I, a little bit partial to some of the green spaces, too.
Thanks. Okay, so you mentioned it before, just, just briefly, the 154 acres on the west side. Can you, can you clarify a bit more about what, you know, what's going on there in your, in, in your view, and, and how it would benefit the community?
Sure. Well, what I've said is probably much of what I know. I know that there's some talk about an RV park campground, those sorts of things. I'm an advocate what, for anything that may bring some tourism, potential tourism to the county, and looking at those things. You know, I know that, I know that often when decisions like that are made, it's not always, not always 100% popular. Again, there's very few things that are. But I think the possibility of, if that's where an athletic complex and/or an RV park go in, or both, then, if that's the best site for it, then, like I said, let's move forward and do some things that, because, because I know that, from what I've heard, many counties do have, you know, they, they manage parks, and they manage RV parks, and they have those. And Wasco County is just a little bit limited in what they have with those. And, you know, and there may be opportunities, again, in the southern part of the county, in the middle and southern part of the counties, to do similar type of things. Again, I don't know what those might be at this point, but, you know, whatever can bring tourism to those areas, also really can benefit those small communities down there, just with more people coming in and buying gas and buying food at their restaurants and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I'm not completely clear. I think our reporting showed that, that they were, on the west side, the new RV project that was, that was being, going through zoning, was approved in nine RV spaces, which is a pretty small amount of spaces.
Seems fairly small, but yeah.
The, the needs seemed greater than nine spaces.
Sure.
For sure.
Sure.
From my perspective. Last couple of questions here. Tell me, there's some solar projects going on in South Wasco. Do you tell us about those?
Sure. I had the opportunity to tour a couple of, one of the existing projects, that's one of them that's currently working, and one of them that's, you know, in the process of being built. And, you know, again, same with, with almost everything that we can talk about, there's pros and cons. But I know that sometimes, the, based on the size of the solar project, the decision whether those are made or not, aren't part, aren't necessarily for the county, but by the state. So if the state approves it, and it's there, then I think the county needs to just maximize, look at maximizing what it can for the communities that the, that the, in or near where the solar projects are, and for the county in general, to, you know, benefit the financial status of the county. But also, you know, kind of, I won't say guide, but maybe assist the landowners in making sure that they kind of maximize and their benefits that they see out of it, as well as making sure that the, the local communities can see a benefit from it. Because it is, it is intrusion, and I don't mean that in entirely negative way, but kind of an intrusion on the area. Because, you know, while it's being built, increased traffic, different things going on, changes. And so, again, sometimes a temporary inconvenience, you know, for a long-term benefit is okay. You know, there, there's plans for a very, very large project out there right now. And I know some people are concerned about what the, you know, what that looks like, and what that does to wildlife, those sorts of things. And again, just kind of learning about it, trying to figure it out. But in general, I'm, you know, supportive of exploring those options for renewable energy projects, because there's definitely not less of a need for energy at any given time. So, and going into the future, just try to make sure that the benefits to the county are maximized.
Yeah, it's from a county that said no to the, to the wind, and Sherman and Yang Gillum certainly said yes to those. And they have a very different balance sheet because of that.
Sure. And, and part of that, again, trying to learn more about that, because, but the good news is, I have a lot of friends still up in Sherman County that have been involved with that. And in fact, the, all the people on the Sherman County Board of Commissioners are what I would consider friends. So kind of working with them to see how they were able to maximize the benefit to the county and to the individuals within. and to the individuals within the county and make sure that if there's anything that can be done by Wasco County for future projects, then that we're in a good position to do that.
Nothing like hindsight.
Yeah, yeah.
It's 2020.
Yeah, I can find out all sorts of things from 15 years ago, 20 years ago.
Yeah, go look into the past, look into the future. Great. So do you have any plans for lobbying at the state level? People often forget that there's one of the roles of the county commissioner is to go to the state and advocate for needs of constituents here. What are your plans for that?
Sure. Well, I know that both Commissioner Hegi and currently Commissioner Kramer, whose seat I'm running for because he's not running again, have both been really active at the state level and trying to, trying to learn from them on what kinds of things, but also how to effectively lobby at the state level for the county would be great. I know one thing that I've mentioned in the past with some past interviews and that sort of thing and a little bit of past experience with is looking at, not necessarily what I'm advocating for, but one of the things that I want to make sure that we don't get passed down is those unfunded mandates, right? And there seems to be a lot, I can't right at this moment think of a particular one off the top of my head that comes into mental health. But one that I was looking at the other day that had more to do with rural fire districts. And while that's not a direct connection to the Board of Commissioners, it is a connection because we're all connected, right? We need to help support those small rural areas. And it had to do with OSHA rulemaking, that had to do with certain breathing apparatus that they had to have available and the cost was going to be borne by these, by these rural fire districts. And so they're saying you have to do this, but you have to pay for it. And for some of those districts, you know, just having to spend that much money would be devastating to their budgets, which are already fairly thin. So just kind of try to keep an eye on those and see what those mandates coming down from the state and make sure that if they're not a financial, trying to assure that they're not a financial burden to the county or to the entities that they get put on is something that, at least at this point, that I feel like I would want to, want to keep a close eye on.
Yeah, cool. Well, thank you. Is there anything that we missed that you wanted to add to the discussion?
No, I think that covered a lot of things. I'll just say that I appreciate all the input by people I've talked to. I'll say the parade was fun and what I would consider a success the other day. I hadn't participated in the parade for a long time. You know, this, there's a bit of a learning curve for me, I will admit. I might not be the most experienced candidate in some respects, but in some respects you look and 32 years of working for a county government and working within it and managing the budgets and that sort of thing. Been on the ground floor with that and really feel like that gives me kind of a unique perspective of the needs and how things are run. And then just again, the number of people from all over the county that I know and have been in contact with that aren't afraid to pick up the phone and call me if they've got a question and know me personally. I just think all those things put together make me a strong candidate for this position. So I appreciate having me on today.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks. Are you going to be at the, meet the candidates?
Yeah, there's next week on Tuesday, the 30th, at the Senior Centre. The Chamber's putting on a town hall for the candidates. I'm guessing that probably all five of us that are on for Wasco County Commissioner will likely be there. We were able to participate in a town hall out in Mopin last week, which went really well and enjoyed actually meeting a couple of the candidates I hadn't met in person yet. And just having that opportunity to speak with people out there. I know that the Chamber's invited a number of other people from other races and depending on how many of those there, we'll see how much time that the county commissioner candidates have in front of people. But whatever time we get will be great. I know Mosher's kind of trying to put something together out there too. Sometimes Mosher's forgotten as well. We talk about South County, but got to remember our friends to the west. And, you know, hopefully just a few other opportunities for me to get out there and meet some other people and answer some questions.
Great. Well, thanks so much for coming on. We really appreciate you coming and sharing your platform with us here at CCC News. For folks that want to meet you and ask you questions in person, can do it on April 30th. That's next Tuesday from 6:00 PM at the Mid-Columbia Senior Centre here in the Dalles. And for more information on Jeff, check out our Meet the Candidates articles and the other media that we've talked about this during this selection season. And wish you best of luck in your race for Wasco County Commissioner.
Thank you, Robyn.